This time all called order, there are regular Dickinson County Commission meeting for October 7th, 2021. Would you please stand and join in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, religious saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item to add to our agenda, and that is to be able to allow disaster relief from taxes on the home of Ernest and Nancy Koenig of Hope, Kansas. And with that addition, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, we have the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the September 30th meeting, also fund expenditures of $153,137.36, wire payments, which includes the utilities of $9,529.04 to John Goff, $2,500 SD security, $3,760.
I move to accept it.
We have the motion and the second for acceptance of the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do commission comments, Ron? No comments. Craig?
Yeah, I've seen today, I brought in a sign that was $200 and it was down, picked up by my brother down at Interstate underneath underpass on Van Road, so it didn't damage it, damaged it, that's all I have.
Okay. I do not have any comments at this time. We're going to go to the next item, that's petitions, proclamations, and public comments. Before we have public comments, we have Butch Post here, he's the Rooks County Emergency Manager, and he's also the president of the Kansas Emergency Management Association. And so, Butch, I'll kind of turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Where do you want to present this?
Right over there in the corner is good.
Okay. That'll work. Thank you.
Have the flag right behind you, just picture that in and...
Okay. Good morning. I am Butch Post, Rooks County Emergency Manager and President of the Kansas Emergency Management Association for the upcoming year. Every year, our annual conference, KEMA presents various awards to certain members. The nominations are from current KEMA members that have witnessed the positive influence of their nominee in the past year, and the KEMA Executive Board reviews the nominations and then votes on the various recipients. Chancy Smith, Dickinson County Emergency Manager, was one of those nominees. He was selected as the winner of the Owen Turrentine Emergency Management Professional of the Year for 2021. I'd like to give you a little bit of background on that award. This award is presented to a Kansas Emergency Management Professional who has been an outstanding coordinator and leader for a number of years, exemplifies the ideals of public or professional public service, has high principles of community preparedness, meets the professional certification requirements of the association, which is the Kansas Certified Emergency Manager, and has a personal dedication to the safety of the citizens in the community, or distinguished him or herself and the association through some outstanding service to its members or the public, or by exhibiting an exceptionally high standard of leadership and professionalism during response to a disaster situation in his or her jurisdiction. This award was renamed to honor Owen Turrentine, former operations coordinator with Kansas Division of Emergency Management. I know that you are all aware of how lucky you are to have an EAM like Chancy serve your accountings, but I'd like to share a portion of the nomination letter with you that was submitted to the KEMA board for their consideration. I feel this nomination letter holds special emphasis because it comes from all of Chancy's peers in the North Central Region. In Dickinson County, Chancy has been a tireless advocate for preparedness and has worked with all levels of local government, schools, and businesses to help them prepare for any and all hazards the county might face. He has developed a community emergency response team, also known as CERT, and he has taught CERT training to students. Chancy is a longtime member of the Kansas Incident Management Team and serves as Deputy Division Supervisor of the North Central Team and is a member of the EMT Working Group. He is one of the longest-serving members of the North Central Regional Homeland Security Council, and early on in the COVID-19 pandemic, Chancy contacted all the North Central Regional Emergency Managers and organized a daily meeting to bring them all together. That meeting is still happening, they had one this morning. So, this region felt that this was one of the most critical parts of managing the COVID pandemic in their counties, and regardless of how many, how minor the incident seems to be, if you call Chancy, he is quickly there to offer whatever help you need. He will give you an honest, frank, and sometimes painful answer when asked. He will stand his ground until a consensus and compromises made out of honesty and mutual respect, and he will always have your back. It is now my pleasure to present the 2021 KEMA Emergency Management Professional of the Year to Chancy.
Can someone take a picture of me and the rest of the units?
I was wondering, why don't...
Just to introduce them to you, Butch, like you said, is from Rooks County. This is James Quinlan, he's from Cloud County. Baldwin Fisher, used to be the Lincoln County Emergency Manager, who's now planner for Riley County. Lori Harrison's next to him, she's the Riley County Emergency Manager. Next to Lori is Natasha. Natasha's in Celine County now, is the Deputy Director of Celine County. Next to Natasha is Michelle. Michelle is the Celine County Emergency Manager. Next to Michelle is my beautiful wife, Kristy. Next to Kristy is Dave Doe, Dave Doe is the Mitchell County Emergency Manager, also used to be the Lincoln County Emergency Manager. Keith Haber...
Best for last.
Rex Beamer drove all the way from Ford County to come see us. He's the Dodge City Emergency Management Director. And Keith Haber is, he does two counties. He does Ellsworth County and he does Russell County. So, I feel blessed to have the support I do from these guys to all come.
Well, nice to have you all here, and yes, why don't we get a group picture if you want to get common rows? Couple of rows and...
We're just going to have to be closer to Chancy, sorry.
We'll wait till his wife gets there.
Move sideways.
His wife isn't in there yet. She turned the microphone over. Put it in between us so we look prettier.
Come on, Dave, not that face. I think you are supposed to smile, it's...
Need one with my three commissioners? And maybe Brad? Got it. I'll get behind you, man.
You got two rows here?
I don't think they'll show up in a picture. Thank you. Okay, that'll be a bucket of tea. Charles. Oh, there's Bill's Charlie. I'll give him more, I'll give him one of mine. Price here. Thank you. I'll send you the bill.
Chancy, congratulations. We work hard, I think, in the county to bring professionalism and a high level and to be recognized by your peers in the state, and, you know, that's really something. And congratulate you for all the hard work you do, and nice that you had so many people come in to see you. So, that's, it was great to have you here.
We kind of like him. He's an okay guy.
Did you have anything to say, Chancy?
No, no, I do, it's just the support, the support's great, this award means quite a bit. This is, this is an award everybody strives to get, it's just an honor to get it. After 16 years of being the caliber of people that win it, it's an honor to really get this award, it really is. I'm just looking at the bottom, who all sent that in for you is pretty impressive too. Yeah. I know most of the, most of the, some of them probably didn't.
And, you know, we need you folks here in Dixon County, but throughout the state, and appreciate the work you do. And none of us want to see any disasters or have any disasters, but, you know, the reality is, there has to be the preparedness to step in and take care of things. So, thank you for all the work that all of you do as a group, and especially Chancy, thank you.
I'm going to invite you to stay. For the rest of the meeting. No, I'm sure it's pretty neat. Usually when we're together, there is a disaster, so. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. As I mentioned earlier, we do not have any petitions or proclamations, but there also is opportunity for public comment at this time. So, if there is anyone that's joining us online, or I guess everybody else has left the room, tell Chancy he's a leader, you know, as soon as he left, they all followed.
I heard he'd buy lunch.
There you go. Okay, we're going to go on to our reports of county officers. Brad?
Okay, we'll start out with the year-to-date staffing reports from Diane in your packet. And as you see there at the bottom under new hires, we've had quite a bit of activity in the last month. Many of them were in the jail, which I think are a direct result of the increase, early increase you gave in salaries, as well as the fact that they're working now. I think that combination is going a long ways to help attract staff. It's my understanding from Sheriff Davis, with these last two corrections officers that they've hired, that aren't here very, I think next week actually, it's going to be a full staff. And so, that's the first time, as long as I can remember, that's happened. And I do know that they interviewed yesterday for a corrections jail administrator, and they got a couple of good applicants, so I'm confident that I'll have that position filled here in the next few weeks as well. So, not a lot of terminations, we have one resignation there, so that's always good too. So, the other report is from Janelle for the year-to-date budget reports. And I think everything's fairly normal. Janelle indicated to me this morning that the only concern that is concerning is the health there, the line items, which I think is probably expected, given the fact of the COVID issues we dealt with all year. But I know we do have a number of different grants in that department that we utilize money for various sources, for various purposes as well. And so, Janelle just needs to get with y'all and they'll work that out. We've got enough money in there, it's just a matter of what it's showing at the end of the year. And then also, the sales tax, as we talked about in the work session, is pleasantly up considerably, over $142,000 for July, which is a reported, that's the highest it's been in 2021. Was the next closest one being $140,000, so that's really good news, given the fact that we're still dealing with some subdued COVID tourism issues and things of that nature. So, we're getting down to the end of the year, obviously, so Janelle will be watching those budgets just a little bit closer as we wind down, but everybody's looking great, so. The next thing that I had was the construction update. We had our meeting Monday, and you've got a list in there of the different items that we were briefed on. I won't go through them all in detail, many of them are repeat performances from two weeks ago, but the painters have moved into the basement, they just about painted out. The plumbers were all done in the basement, and the insulators were in their insulated pipe. The ceiling grid people were moving down to put ceiling grid in the basement. Many of the doors in the basement and the top floor are already hung, and the painter was getting ready to go in and do staining on the doors and ceiling and do door frames. So, with those type of things, you can see that things are moving along. They, I was pleasantly surprised to hear from Tom yesterday that the demo guys were going to finish up yesterday, which is good news. He thought they were, Monday, we, at our meeting, we thought we were still two weeks out, but they were able to get the last of the steel out of the jail yesterday, and they had started down on the stairwell going downstairs, and then the room downstairs that has to come out, so we might be a little farther ahead than we originally had estimated. Even though we're still behind, we might be a little bit farther ahead than we originally estimated there. So, we're working through some issues in the jail as far as heating, air conditioning, there's people that are working this morning on that. Other than that, it's just, it's kind of normal, normal progression, and things are moving pretty fast. As Craig and I were talking in the work session, the one thing that still concerns me is the elevators. We haven't got a real good, warm and fuzzy feeling from the elevator contractor that they're going to be here when they say they are, and get things done. We kind of seem to get the "I don't care" attitude, you'll get us when we get us. But as you know, the elevator is going to be a hinging point on the fact that we can't put people in that often to work on multiple floors if we don't have an elevator to provide for them. So, we're continuing to work on that, and we'll see what happens. They're supposed to be here in two weeks or so to work on a new elevator and install it in the jail. So, once we get them on site, maybe we'll have a little better of every snow what's going on, so. That's basically it on that. Let's hear any questions. Sherry and I met with Ron Morris, City Manager from Abilene on Tuesday. He had requested a meeting with us to talk about IT services. We're having some difficulties in getting computers to work properly, especially in the police department when it comes to law enforcement applications that they have to have, and the security and the networking abilities that are in place. You just can't go out and hire somebody to do that at the local computer store, obviously. So, we're fortunate that our IT staff is very well-versed in that. We are already connected to the city of Abilene, that we host their services through the courthouse, and we're connected with fiber optics in the city building. So, it would make sense, if we can help them out, we could possibly do that. So, Sherry's in the process of looking to see what that timeframe might entail. Ron is going to look and see what they've been spending on IT services with the company they're using, and we're going to try to come up with something that works for both of us to where we don't have any extra expenses out, but what we're seeing with them, we get compensated for. And the ultimate goal is they will get a better service. And so, much like many other things we do with the cities in the county, we'll work with them, and if we can help them out, we certainly would be glad to do so. So, we may have a, may have an MOU coming to you in the near future that would, a memorandum of understanding that would spell out what services we would provide to them and for what, what the responsibility is to be and what the cost would be, so. And then, we talked in the work session a little bit, Monday is actually our in-service day, which the county services, county offices are all closed because of the holiday. However, we will be working, or the county staff are, since we don't have our traditional in-service ability to go out and stir a hall and do our training, we are going to use it as a catch-up day for all county staff, catch up on those things they normally don't get the ability to do, do some cleaning, whatever that may be, look like, depending on the staffs, and then we'll provide lunch to each department. And we've got some, I know the Civic Center has some team-building exercises and stuff to kind of lighten the mood a little bit with the staff, and so, we're going to spend the day doing that and kind of catch up, so. But the courthouse will be, courthouse, county services, with the exception of the transfer station, will be closed on Monday. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
We're working on the tax sale. I've been in contact with the United States Attorney's Office concerning some disclaimers, so that we don't have delays in the tax sale, and that may be doable. The other is, we're working on the opiate case, and there's some open criminal penalties that I see coming up from that, and we're working through that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. As far as notices and communications, we just had a few of them from the state of Kansas. We've been copied in, it was to the Dixon County Historical Society. It's in regards to the Union Electric Warehouse, which is 205 South Cedar Street, and to inform them that it is now listed on the National Register of Historic Places. This took place September 20th, 2021. We also have a bankruptcy notice, and Doug, I'll give this to you, but I think it's just a notification, really not anything real specific. Malick Conkrot, LC, so you're familiar with that?
Yes, that's the name of the case.
Okay. So, I'll get that to you. Were there any other communications or notices that anyone else received? We do not have any resolutions or unfinished business. We do have a couple of items under other business. The first one is to consider the bid for replacement on 1510 Rain Road. So, Brad?
Okay, as you're aware, this is a bridge that has come to our attention very rapidly, was not in our scope to have to repair this early. But it's located on Rain Road, just towards 1400 Avenue. It's one of our main roads in the county. So, obviously, our typical considerations we look at would be, do we close it? Do we do something different? Do we put coves or, you know, how do we go about doing that that's most costly, efficient, and effective for the county? It's not a candidate for tubes or anything, it can't be closed because it's a main road. So, we have contractors swab-beaten and put together the design and solicited bids on the replacement of that bridge. Bids were opened last week, we did have about eight or nine contractors that showed up, and only two of the contractors submitted bids. The bids came in, well, first, the engineer's estimate, based on the project, was $535,000. The bids came in, the two bids came in at $727,000 for Ebert Construction and $874,000 for Reese Construction. Obviously, going to be higher than our estimate was, but it's the climate we live in, I guess. I had to go, in talking to the engineer, he said that all of their projects are coming in high. There's just a ton of work out there that KDOT and other local entities are awarding, coming out of COVID, and they all have a lot of money to award, and so, there are just not enough contractors to go around. So, they're able to press it up, coupled with the fact that, if you look at all the material, individual material prices, they're all up considerably as well, especially steel, when it comes to steel. So, the option that we discussed was, do we wait and rebid it six months or a year later? We didn't feel like that was a viable option, because it'd probably be higher, because we're slowly seeing everything go up, and chances are, there won't be any more bidders involved at that point either. And so, our recommendation is that we go ahead and bite the bullet and pay the $727,000 to Ebert Construction to get them secured and onboard to get this bridge replaced as soon as possible. It is a Topeka-Shiner Bridge Crossing as well, but it's a big enough bridge that it wouldn't be eligible for that either, so it's far enough south of it. It's in that area. What that does cause us is that gives us a narrow window when they can do the construction. And so, that's may very well be part of the consideration that caused the extra fees, I don't know, so.
And, you know, this highlights the, you have the fluctuation in prices, and often, we've had the engineer give a cost estimate, and it's come in lower than that. But, you know, here's an example where the fluctuation happened to go the other way, and fortunately, we have some sales tax set aside specific for roads and bridges, and so, that's helpful in this manner. But also, you know, thinking back when we had our budget hearing for the next year, and we projected, you know, possibly some of the things we would run into, it's difficult, and I know sometimes there's a tendency, people have told us, you know, let's hold the line on taxes, let's keep everything, just cut it as close as you can. And, you know, here's an example of where there's $200,000 more than what we've anticipated on this particular project, and, you know, you do have to have some money set aside for unforeseen or unexpected things. And as you mentioned, this is a bridge that we did not have scheduled for replacement right now.
Yeah, when we did the budget for 2021, we didn't even know this one was going to be coming up. So, you bring up a very valid point that we have to have extra money in the budget to cover things like this, because I can't imagine in Ron's district, if we were to close that road, the heck can you pay? You know, if that bridge got bad enough that we had to, we had to actually close it and deter people around, so it'll be tough enough to put up with it during the construction, so. But, you know, we've had that happen before, and I'm sure it'll happen again. You just have enough padding, and thank goodness that the taxpayers have provided us the sales tax, because that's where this money will come from, it will save us, so.
You know, the infrastructure in the rural areas, I mean, it's of utmost importance.
Brad, what I don't see on here is these coatings put on to protect the concrete on here.
We typically do that after the fact, and the reason we do that is because we'll have that company into mobilization, we, well, you give it to curb, but we'll have them do two or three of our bridges at one time and get a better price on all three of them, as opposed to, if we put it in here, then you're paying mobilization to that contractor for a one-time job. And if we do, for example, we may do the one on the Clay County line, and this one, and another one that we haven't done yet, get a better price.
Probably haven't been on a fair road yet.
We have not, no, yeah, so we'll do that and get a one mobilization price as opposed to three, so.
I mean, it seems like it's, you know, something you don't need, but at the lifetime of the bridge.
It's worth its weight in gold. I mean, we haven't lived long enough to see the difference, but if you look at the one north of Chapman on Rain Road, the first one we did years ago, it looks like it, other than a little wear, it looks like at the end of the day, we coated it, and you don't have any ice or any salt deterioration, so.
Wow. Okay.
Wax in the car, you know.
That's something that if we're going to go ahead and proceed with this, for me to have a motion, I'll make a motion, accept the Ebert Construction bid for $727,026.7. Okay, so we have the motion and the second for Ebert Construction, $727,226.87. Any other discussion? Did it have a completion, approximate time when they would...
I don't have that answer, I'd have to ask Martin.
But, but it would be done in a timely manner?
It would be done in the Topeka-Shiner frame.
Yeah, it'd have to be done in that time window, and I'm not sure what day it rains, so.
Okay. Well, I know that discussion's...
I know that we were trying to get it done quick enough that we'd have to put steel plates on that bridge to cover the holes if it started pulling up, so.
Okay, any other discussion or question? So, we have the motion and the second for Ebert Construction, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have was one that was added to the agenda, and this is in regards to disaster relief on the taxes for Ernest and Nancy Koenig on their property in Hope. And Brad, what type of disaster, I assume?
That is a fire that occurred on 428 of 21 that totaled the home at that location that they owned. This would be for the abatement of the property taxes for this year.
Okay, so this is a procedural method that we have to, where they can have the tax relief after...
It's really one of those things, I think, is fair type deal. They paid, you know, there are going to be assessed taxes for this year, but you get into April... into April and the house was gone, so they didn't have it to use the rest of the year, so if that'll help them rebuild and get, get beyond that, that's a small price to pay.
Okay. Sir, you have the motion for that?
I'll move. I'll second it.
Got the motion and the second to go ahead and provide this disaster relief on taxes for Ernest and Nancy Koenig. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there's, this one needs all of our signatures?
Yeah, just that what she.
Okay, we do not have any other items? I'd move that we adjourn?
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We adjourned.